October 3rd State Board meeting will now come to order. Good morning and welcome to the October 3rd, 2025 State Board of Education meeting. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are finished speaking. Please note that board members may be using their cell phones and laptop computers to access the agenda and information related to this meeting. Live streaming is available through the State Board of Education website. Would the recording secretary please call the roll? Kristin Christensen.
Here.
Maggie Douglas.
Here.
Lisa Schonhoff.
Here.
Liz Renner.
Here.
Kirk Penner. Sherri Jones.
Here.
Elizabeth Tegmeyer.
Here.
Deb Brenneri. Commissioner Maher.
Here.
Six present, two absent. Quorum is established. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted as you enter the room from the main entrance doors. The Open Meetings Act is also posted on the State Board of Education's website. Agenda item 2.1, Sherri, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, I am honored to do so. Whereas dyslexia is defined as an unexpected difficulty in reading, whereas dyslexia is most commonly caused by a difficulty in phonological processing, the appreciation of the individual sounds of spoken language, which affects the ability of an individual to speak, read, spell, and often the ability to learn a second language. Whereas dyslexia is a most common learning disability and affects eighty to ninety percent of all individuals with a learning disability. Whereas dyslexia is persistent and highly prevalent, affecting as many as one out of every five individuals. Whereas great progress has been made in understanding dyslexia on a scientific level, including the epidemiological, cognitive, and neurobiological basis of dyslexia. Whereas the achievement gap between typical readers and dyslexic readers emerges as early as first grade. And whereas early screening for and early diagnosis of dyslexia are critical for ensuring that individuals with dyslexia receive targeted, evidence-based intervention that leads to fluent reading, the promotion of self-awareness and self-empowerment, the well-being of the student, and the provision of necessary accommodations that ensure success in school and in life. Whereas Nebraska has taken steps to improve outcomes for students with dyslexia through the implementation of the Nebraska Reading Improvement Act, passage of the Nebraska Literacy Plan, and receipt of the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. Now therefore be it resolved, the State Board of Education recognizes October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Resolved, the State Board calls on other policymakers, districts, schools, community providers, and parents and education decision-makers to partner together to support students with dyslexia. Resolved, the State Board calls upon the NDE to provide and promote best practices and resources to parents, families, and educators in support of all Nebraska children. Signed on behalf of the Nebraska State Board of Education this third day of October 2025.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? I move to adopt the resolution. Second. It is moved and seconded to adopt the resolution to recognize October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion is to adopt the resolution to recognize October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Would the recording secretary please call the roll? Renner.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Tegmeyer.
Yes.
Penner.
Yes.
Schonhoff.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. The affirmative has it and the resolution is adopted. The next item of business is the Commissioner's report. Commissioner Maher, please provide your report.
Good morning, thank you. There are no items that have been identified to be removed from the consent agenda. If board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, please fill out the form at this time. Just a reminder, any items removed from the consent agenda will be taken up under additional Good morning. Great to be in Fremont for our October State Board meeting, and I want to give a big shout out and thank you to Superintendent Brad Dahl and the whole Fremont team for sharing this incredible space with us, and also for the hospitality shown to us and the tour that we had yesterday of the new CTE facility. Truly outstanding and really appreciated. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't say how awesome it is to be in Dodge County and truly how awesome it is to be this close to Hooper. All right, that's the only point of personal privilege I'll take there. Hello and thanks to all of you who are joining us here today and who are joining us online. I've got a few key updates for all of you, and the report today will be maybe just a tad longer than it usually is. First, I want to address the government shutdown. Earlier this week, I sent a message to our staff and to our public and our non-public schools to share the information we have so that any questions folks have might be answered in that information. Remember that around seventy percent of our staff are federally funded, so you can imagine that this kind of news can lead to confusion or could be concerning to some. We assured our staff that we do not anticipate any direct impact on the employment of Nebraska Department of Education employees, but we do anticipate that we can expect slower-than-normal responses from certain areas within the U.S. government. Education, labor, and agriculture would be examples of where we could see that slowdown in response time, particularly in the areas that manage discretionary programs, which may have no staff available during a shutdown period. As you all likely know at this point, a lot will be determined on how long the shutdown actually is. We've also communicated with our schools that there should be limited, if any, impact on accessing critical grants like IDEA, Title I, or Perkins Grants. The state can continue to draw down from the federal government financial sites, and we will have no issues on federal grants where that award has already occurred, and that's almost all of our federal grants at this point. So we're watching closely some potential issues for nutrition services, which flow through the Department of Agriculture, for DDS, which flows through the Social Security Administration, and some early childhood grants that come through DHHS. For school nutrition, we anticipate schools will be okay until a future federal reimbursement occurs. Some early childhood centers may have some cash flow issues starting in November as these funds are paid a month in arrears, and DDS awards are usually provided the first of the month, so the state may have to front some costs there for any incurred needs. We're working closely with state officials at the Department of Administrative Service, you may hear us frequently refer to them as DAS, to monitor that situation, and with federal partners to communicate any interruptions that our schools or our clients may encounter. The next topic is blue ribbon schools. The U.S. Department of Education historically has honored schools through the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program, and that program has been discontinued fairly recently, and we've had several Nebraska schools that had already been notified of their eligibility and had applied, and several schools that would have met the standards based on last year's benchmarks. We plan to honor those schools, and we'll be sharing more news on just how we will honor those schools next week. Third, my superintendent's advisory council has met several of our senior leaders from our staff traveled to Hershey, where we held our first superintendent's advisory council meeting of the new school year. We welcomed a few new members to that group. We discussed AI and cybersecurity. We discussed alternative teacher pathways, and we gave a quick update on our strategic plan and asked for follow-up feedback. We shared a few of the highlights from the School Financing Review Commission as well. I continue to find these meetings invaluable and am continuously impressed by the talent of our superintendents and the quality of feedback that they provide. Similarly, we'll host our first non-public advisory council meeting on October 23rd, so just a few weeks from now, where we plan to discuss very similar topics with that particular group. My next topic is a topic that is really taking on some steam, and I wanted to let the board and those listening know about this group of preschool through age twenty folks who are talking about many, many things, but really talking about how do we align systems in the state of Nebraska. We're still mulling over a name. When we have that name, I'll let you know, and I'm sure it will be riveting. I heard one chuckle, thank you for that. We have, the members of the group currently are President Jeff Gold from the University of Nebraska System, Chancellor Paul Turman from the Nebraska State College System, Michael Baumgartner from CCPE, Paul Ilitch from Southeast Community College, Commissioner Katie Thurber from the Department of Labor, and then we get support for our group from a former Speaker of the House of the Legislature Greg Adams, and Ken Byrd, who is a former superintendent and educational advocate. We're, from a big picture, we're committed to strengthening Nebraska's invaluable educational systems from early learning to post-secondary institutions and workforce programs with a renewed commitment to align systems and strengthen outcomes across the full learner journey in Nebraska. During this initiative, we want to examine Nebraska's existing educational assets, and we want to work together to identify and have identified the following three priorities for this group to work on. Priority number one is attainment, and that is to achieve the state's seventy percent post-secondary credential goal by aligning supports of all of the programs that I've mentioned already. A second priority is workforce readiness. We want to ensure that all learners, regardless of background or geography, develop the employability and life skills required for workforce success. And then the final priority that we've established is efficiency and accountability, to promote a system that is effective for learners and efficient for taxpayers with shared data, coordinated services, and a commitment to return on investment. Lofty goals, but it's a good group, and I would tell you I'm really pleased with what we have going thus far. Finally, with the P20 initiative, I hope you've been keeping track of the school financing. Finally, my final project after the P20 topic is that of the School Financing Review Commission. Hopefully, you've been keeping track of what we've been doing. At this point, we've laid a strong foundation for our policies and governance, and now it's time to actually get some work done. We'll have another meeting on October 31st, and during this time, we have a series of activities in the works to get great feedback in anticipation of the required report that will, that is due from the commission in early December, and I would tell you that the Department of Ed will be primarily responsible for generating that report. We've had a lot of people who have really worked hard to get us where we are, but two I would like to shout out at this meeting. One is Dr. Four in terms of planning and preparation and also putting together policies and procedures. I'm really glad he likes that stuff because it's been essential for us. And also to Bryce Wilson, who's been giving us invaluable information on history and modeling and topics of where we might go in the near future with the financing commission. So we've got a long way to go, and as I said, really, I think the work starts at the next meeting where we break into groups and actually come up with some potential topics to give to the legislature for them to mull over and ultimately make decisions on. While we don't have a board meeting in November, I anticipate being in communication with you all as important dates come across our plates and to specifically iron out issues and opportunities we have to finalize our strategic plan for your consideration. It is still my hope that we've got a new plan ready to go by January 1. I think we can get there. I know we have a lot of work to do yet, but hopefully, hopefully, that's still a goal for all of you as well. And as always, I want to thank you for your service to our state and for the preparation for this meeting. We're looking forward to continuing doing the good work that we've done for students and for clients in our state. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. There is no president's report this month. We now move to our public comment period. This period may be available to any person who wishes to address the board on any matter appearing on the agenda. Up to ninety minutes will be allowed for the public comment period. A majority of members present in voting may take action to extend the total amount of time allowed for the public comment period. A majority of members present in voting may also take action to allow or terminate public comment at any time during a meeting. If you are not signed in and wish to speak, please sign in at this time. Those wishing to speak must be signed in at the table outside the meeting room. Each individual speaking to the board will be required to complete a sign-in card for identification of oneself. Individuals are required to include on the sign-in card their name, address, and name of any organization represented. Individuals may be prohibited to speak in public comment if the sign-in card does not include the required information. Persons speaking to the board during public comment should state their name, city, and state at the beginning of their allotted time and may submit printed materials for the board, but may not use any other form of media. Anyone refusing to be identified will be prohibited from speaking. Each person may address the board for up to five minutes. A majority of board members present in voting may take action to reduce or extend the amount of individual time allotted to all the speakers. If at any time a person appearing before the board exceeds the time limitation set forth in this policy or on the agenda, or becomes abusive or threatening in language or behavior, it shall be the responsibility of the president to refuse permission to continue to address the board. We have six public comment cards submitted. Vice President Neary will announce the names of the speakers.
Good morning. Our first speaker is Dan Hayes, if you'd like to come forward, and Avery Hoag, you'll be in line next, and Jenna Poole after that. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Dan Hayes. I'm the Director of Theater at Midland University, so just a few blocks away, and I was really excited that you're going to be here, so welcome to Fremont. I'm just going to make a very brief statement. I have been working on reexamining theater education and the certification here in Nebraska for more than a year, and I've spoken in front of this board already, but this morning, this is a great opportunity, I brought four of my students today, so you could hear directly from the students about their passion about teaching theater. They are very, very different from different parts of the United States and in different parts of their academic journey, but I think they're all very common in their passion for wanting to be a schoolteacher and wanting to teach theater. I would like to say thank you for your attention to my students, and a special, a personal thank you for all of your work on behalf of the students in education in Nebraska. I was a public school teacher for many, many years, and education of, public education is one of my biggest goals, as well as the arts. So I do want you to know, as soon as the meetings are over, we are probably all going to take off because I need to get them back to their classes and I have to teach. So thank you for listening to us, and I wish you a good day.
Thank you, Dan. Avery, you're up next, then Jenna, then Elliot.
Good morning. I am Avery Hoag. I am a freshman currently pursuing a secondary English degree at Midland University. I am actively seeking thirty credits in theater classes in the hopes that I will gain a valuable endorsement that will enhance my ability to be a teacher and director of the arts. I am speaking on a theater endorsement for education students. Aside from English, theater is one of my biggest passions. I've been encouraged my entire life to pursue theater by my mother, Carrie Hoag. She is the current director of the High School Theater Department at Elmwood Murdoch, which is a small Class E II school in rural Nebraska. My mother is not a theater director full-time. She is the special education teacher and coordinator for the elementary portion of our school district, yet she has found a way to make high school students a priority by giving them a theater department. My mother was not given the opportunity for this endorsement or education when she was pursuing her multiple degrees. However, she ensures me that she would have if it had been available to her. Even if it becomes available now, she ensures me that she would further her education to receive it as a forty-eight-year-old woman. I've had long discussions with my mother about whether or not I should pursue a theater endorsement. This endorsement has not been set in stone, so that leaves a level of insecurity in me and my peers for the credits we are currently working towards. My mom and many other school educators across the state have a need for this endorsement, and my mother is one of the most intelligent people I know when it comes to theater. She has plenty of background and is capable of teaching it to the best of her ability. However, she would benefit as an educator from the additional knowledge and qualifications it would provide. As of right now, if my mom were to decide that she wanted to move up and work as a theater director or educator in a larger-class school district, she would be placed below competitors applying for the position because she doesn't have the educational qualifications. This endorsement would give her a more well-rounded knowledge of the art, providing her with better support for her students, as well as support for her future if she ever decides that theater, which isn't an offered class in most small schools, is something that she wants to teach. Education requires well-rounded teachers, and that should not be foreign to any of us here. Thirty credits of theater classes would make for better theater teachers for our state. It would make teachers more qualified to teach a subject with immeasurable value and vast historical complexity at any class or any level. High school theater students from Class A to D deserve teachers with the knowledge necessary to build strong skills in the areas of history, communication, and culture, all which theater provides in multitudes. Theater is important. One of the many benefits of theater creates well-spoken individuals, like the students and faculty that are here to speak today, and we are mere representatives of hundreds of other students who would pursue or would have pursued this endorsement if it were available to them. I hope that you consider what I said, and you consider the teachers who have just begun their journey, teachers who are already working, and even those who are ending their career. Give us new opportunities. Give your students, your children, better educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna Pod, would you like to come forward, and you'll be followed by Elliot Bremmend.
Hello, I'm Jenna Poole. I'm a senior English education major with a theater endorsement here at Midland University. I have been involved and have had a very major passion for both speech and theater arts throughout all of my secondary schooling, and I've carried this love into my college career. As a future educator, I want to continue both of these passions by sharing my love of these activities with my future students. During all this time, I've also had a very strong passion for English language arts. I've known for a very long time that I specifically want to teach both English language arts and theater, and also coach speech on top of that. While this is exactly, while I have what I need with the theater endorsement, there are some friends that I have that would specifically only want to teach theater, and for me, also wanting to go into speech, I don't have what I need for that, unfortunately. However, some of my friends who really want to teach theater don't have the opportunities that they need because there's not a full theater education degree for them to go into. Overall, if there's anything that I want you to take away from what I have to say today, I want you to remember that there are many different people who want to pursue many different pathways in this. There are the people like me who want to pursue English language arts and theater, so they would need the endorsement rather than the full theater education degree, and there's people like my friends who want to pursue only teaching theater, who would need the full theater education degree. So please keep in mind that both the endorsement and the full degree would be very valuable for many future educators out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Elliot Bremmend will be followed by Alexis.
Hi, my name's Elliot. I grew up in Norfolk, Nebraska, but I'm now getting my master's degree at Midland University. I'm our theater department graduate assistant. I actually came to Midland and I got my arts management degree, that was my undergrad, but my true passion is to teach theater. I can't get that at Midland. I can't get that at any college in Nebraska because we don't have a education degree in theater, and so I've been auditing a lot of our classes, actually, just to get that knowledge to teach theater. And I want, I am one of those students that Jenna was talking about. I don't want to teach anything else. I want to just teach theater, and I've done a lot of research on schools that have, don't have the teachers to teach the theater classes, so that could be me eventually someday. We offer things such as education in music, math, science, but we don't offer that in theater. And I would say theater is just as academically rigorous as those other subjects, so I'd like you to keep that in mind. A lot of our, sorry, a lot of our students in Nebraska are leaving because we don't have this degree. They're going to states like Iowa, Missouri, what else did I write down, Kansas, Colorado, because we don't have this degree, so just trying to keep our students here in Nebraska so that we can have those teachers eventually someday is something that I think is very important, I guess. And then, what else do I have to say? I am here because I don't just want a job, I want to create opportunities for the next generation of Nebraska students. I do not want to live in a state that follows an education, I want to live in a state that leads in it. Our students deserve the chance to learn theater from teachers who are fully trained, fully supported, and fully recognized. Please help us make this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis, would you like to come forward, and then Rusty after that?
Hello, I'd first like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and share my passion for arts education. My name is Alexis Tavola, and I'm a non-traditional student in my second semester of my junior year at Midland University. I am studying secondary English education with a theater endorsement. What drew me to Midland University was their exceptional education department and their renowned theater program. I come from a long line of female educators, and I've always known I wanted to be a teacher. I knew I had found a college that would work for me when I discovered that I could study both English and theater education at Midland. I came from a performing arts company called The Young Americans. This group has provided Midland with many exceptional art students who have flourished on Midland stages. Many of the actors I met through this company wanted to study at Midland and travel to Nebraska, but decided to go elsewhere due to Midland's lack of a full theater education major. Midland University is a unique college with eleven percent of its students being transfer students and forty-seven percent of its student body being from out of state. Comparing this to different Nebraska universities like UNO, their out-of-state students only make up roughly twenty-three percent of their student population. If Midland became the only university in the state to provide a theater education major, we would not only be appealing to the Nebraska state residents who are currently attending school in different states to receive their desired degree, but also to students from out of state due to Midland's impeccable efforts at promoting our programs all across the nation and abroad, making Midland the perfect place for this major. This major would make Midland a destination school for students across the nation who are passionate future theater educators. It is impossible to know how many students Midland has missed out on due to our lack of theater education degree, but I can tell you that I personally know five students, and I am just one person. With Midland's high percentage of students who travel from out of state or transfer to our college, they do not take the decision of attending Midland lightly. That means that their degree and experience at Midland must be exactly what they are looking for to train them in their future career. For me, Midland was the perfect fit with a secondary English education major with the theater endorsement. For others, like my classmates... For others, like my classmate Elliot, he is looking for a full theater education major. Allowing both the endorsement and the major to coexist allows for expansion of our programs rather than restrictions. It promotes theater specialists and multi-talented educators. School districts are struggling to fill arts education positions, especially in theater, while we see the student interest in theater departments flourishing. Midland has the potential of becoming a leading example for the rest of Nebraska, setting the standard for theater education and filling the critical gap in our state's educational landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Rusty, if you would like to come forward.
Good morning from Wayne, America. My name is Rusty Ruth. I am the Director of Theater at Wayne State College, and I want to thank Dan Hayes for extending this invitation today for us to also speak on the importance of theater subject endorsement. In my time at Wayne State College, I've had the pleasure of being able to see our program version from having only a few people as theater education majors to now routinely bringing three to five cohorts a year, and that's with only offering a supplemental education degree in theater arts. Recently, I had asked our current and former students whether or not they would have been agreeable to be in a full subject endorsement for theater, and 90% of those students have indicated that's the path they would have wanted to take. I'm proud to say at our school that we go a little bit above and beyond the minimal thresholds for the supplemental education degree for theater, and many of our students would take extra electives because they were that passionate and wanted to make sure that they were getting enough education to be able to better serve the students. I could also speak on firsthand experience on meeting with prospective students, whether that's on campus, visiting their schools, or seeing them at festivals like the Nebraska Thespian's Conference. Those students who I would talk to who are interested in pursuing theater education along with subjects such as history, music, art, et cetera, would end up telling me they were looking at schools like Northwest Missouri State, Kansas State, South Dakota State, and the University of Northern Iowa. And because they would go to those schools more often than not because those states recognize a full theater subject endorsement. So I'd hate to lose our students, our best and our brightest on that phase of life. Also, it helps, our current policies also restrict people from being able to come back. I understand that when students, after they get their degree, there's this strong calling for home. We all have it. We want to be in our communities. We want to be with our family, our friends, and those traditions that we grew up with. Since our state does not recognize a subject endorsement, it's harder to bring those students back in. So, and I'm speaking as a boy from Deadwood, South Dakota, who loves being transplanted, so I hope you don't take that against me, but I couldn't think of anywhere better to raise a family than Nebraska. And if I'm thinking of that as someone who's just recently transplanted in the last seven years, I can imagine that's what our students who leave the state to get a degree and want to come back also feel. Thank you for this time, and we really hope that you consider the theater subject endorsement. Thank you so much.
That includes, that concludes our public comment. Submitted written, public comments are attached in the electronic meeting agenda for the board and the public to review. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda. Second.
It is moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Per board policy, there's no discussion on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Would the recording secretary please call the roll? Schoenhoff?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Penner? Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. The affirmative has it, and the consent agenda is adopted. The next item of business are the reports from the standing committees. I will report on behalf of the executive committee meeting. The executive committee reports on its October 2nd, 2025 meeting. Members present were Chair Elizabeth Tegmeyer, Vice Chair Deb Neary, Sheri Jones, and Liz Renner. The committee reviewed two discussion items. First, NDE staff provided the committee with an update on the strategic planning process and shared an initial text draft of the plan. Then the committee reviewed potential board bylaw and policy revisions as recommended by NDE staff. The committee also reviewed two information items. First, the committee reviewed revised information regarding a proposed process for improvement grants. Finally, the committee reviewed the recommendation of a reappointment to the State Committee for the reorganization of school districts. This item appeared on the consent agenda for approval. This concludes the executive committee report. Elizabeth Tegmeyer, Chair. Are there any questions on the executive committee report? Item 7.1.A, Strategic Plan. Board members, are there any questions or discussion on this item? Kristin?
Yeah. Could I just hear from the exec committee what the discussion was like yesterday about the strategic plan?
Liz, you went too?
Yeah. I think it was a really productive conversation. Most of the feedback, as I recall, was about additions to incorporate student subgroups in some of our goal or metric documenting in the strategic plan, just to be sure that we're representing, you know, closing the achievement gap, addressing all varieties of students that would benefit from student achievement goals and other items. And right now, that's the main thing that I remember from it. I don't know. Anyone else?
Anyone else from exec? You went too?
Sure. And those subgroups, one of the ways we might be able to look at them is use the federally required subgroup descriptions or look at poverty, you know, students at a certain poverty level, but we wanted more than just the overall, you know, average of all the students because we really wanted to look at how the vulnerable students were progressing. And the other piece, and we also asked for, well, the next level of detail that we get will be indicators, and we asked for goals that could be met like every year or two, you know, as this, because this is, you know, going out to 2030, but we want, they're going to be giving us the indicators by year as the next level of detail that we'll receive.
And the executive committee is planning to do one more committee meeting before our December so that hopefully we can iron things out and have the proposed strategic plan ready when we come in December. We still want to stick to that timeline as best we can. So that's kind of our goal, is to do one more committee meeting in the middle of our break. Any other questions? All right. Item 7.1.B. This is the board bylaw and policy revisions. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? I would state that these are just very, very minor revisions with the links are in spark. Item 7.2. Chair Kristin Christensen will report on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
The Budget and Finance Committee reports that at its Thursday, October 4th meeting, October 2nd meeting, members present were Kristin Christensen, Maggie Douglas, Kirk Penner, and Lisa Schoenhoff. The committee reviewed three action items. The first item reviewed was the submission of the 2025-26 deficit budget request. The committee recommends approval of this item. The second action item reviewed was a potential contract for a program quality anchor for Results Matter and Step Up to Quality. The committee had no recommendation on this item. The last item reviewed was for a contract for early childhood integrated data system. The committee recommends approval of this item. The committee then reviewed one discussion item for board member travel expenses, noting no concerns. Last, the committee reviewed four information items, including an update on the comprehensive literacy state development grant expenditures, a proposed contract for a veterans' education management system application and database, and a proposed contract for federal IDEA and early childhood data application development, and a contract for the 21st century community learning centers statewide evaluation. This concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report. Kristin Christensen, Chair.
Are there any questions on the Budget and Finance Committee report? Kristin, I had one. Can you tell me again what that first, it was the, I think it was an information item on a grant that you reviewed? Was it this? Was it the CLSD?
Yeah, the CLSD expenditure update.
Okay, so that's the literacy run. I know that we have another one that's technology and it's very similar letters.
Oh, yes. Yeah, no, this was the, we just get a standing update every month on the CLSD expenditures, so that was just our regular update.
That's what I thought it was, but then, there's a lot of alphabets. Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Are there any questions on the reports in item 7.2.A? Is there a motion on item 7.2.B?
Yes, I move to authorize the commissioner to submit the 2025-26 deficit budget request.
It is moved and seconded to authorize the commissioner to submit the 2025 through 26 deficit budget request. Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion is to authorize the commissioner to submit the 2025-26 deficit budget request. Would the recording secretary please call the roll? Douglas?
Yes.
Schoenhoff?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Penner? Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. The affirmative has it, and the motion to authorize the commissioner to submit the 2025-26 deficit budget request is adopted. Is there a motion on item 7.2.C?
Yes, I move to approve a contract for a program quality anchor for Results Matter and Step Up to Quality.
Second. It is moved and seconded to approve a contract for a program quality anchor for Results Matter and Step Up to Quality. Is there any discussion on the motion? Do you have something, your light's on? Oh, sorry. Okay. The motion is to approve a contract for a program quality anchor for Results Matter and Step Up to Quality. Would the recording secretary please call the roll? Renner?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schoenhoff?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. The affirmative has it, and the motion to approve a contract for a program quality anchor for Results Matter and Step Up to Quality is adopted. Is there a motion on item 7.2.D?
I move to authorize the commissioner to contract for services for the Early Childhood Integrated Data Systems, or EKIDS.
Second. It is moved and seconded to contract for services for the Early Childhood Integrated Data Systems. Is there any discussion on the motion? Lisa?
Yes. This is one that I would like to have Lane come on up, if you'd be willing. I just had a couple of questions about it.
Lane Carr, could you come to the front?
Lisa, would it be okay if I did a little preamble before Lane comes up?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm glad you have questions on this. I think this is an easily understood, misunderstood program and one that we're collaborating with DHHS on and one that we've had conversations with Director Corsi from DHHS on, so I look forward to explaining a little more what this is. Lane, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. I'm Lane Carr. I'm the Administrator for the Office of Policy at the department. Lisa, do you have some questions?
I do. Okay, so first off, I'll just kind of go through my questions and then let you answer them all at the same time. The first thing I did was I looked into the LR 205, and what I saw was that it died in committee. You have told me that that's not actually the case, so I'm not sure why that was in the legislative document that I read. Then the second question that I had, as I started doing some research and looked at how other states were using this, and so I wanted to just get things cleared up for how Nebraska's going to use it as compared to other states. It had said that they were collecting data on family income, gender, and ESL status, language status. There was a whole, long, long list of data that's being collected, and then in states across the nation, they're sharing it with government agencies, and it's very, it's in multiple documents, it's in documents by this Institute of Education Sciences, what is early childhood integrated data system. There's just, as I was up doing this like, I think, 11:00 PM last night, and it just kind of raised some red flags for me. So I wanted you to kind of clarify all the data that we're collecting, because this is zero-to-five-year-olds, which is also one of my big concerns, is sometimes I wonder if we're putting convenience over what's really best for kids in the long run? And is it to get them prepared for school and to become readers, and is it necessary to do that? So these are just all the things that I fell asleep last night with swirling around in my head.
So, Lane, do you, do you have the questions that you need to answer?
I think so.
Okay.
Two questions there. So first, on the LR 205, if you're unfamiliar, LR 205 is, as we speak about in the rationale document, is from Senator Strowman, and it is a legislative resolution to study, have an interim study on the EKIDS system, and none of the education committee hearings have been scheduled yet. So I would say that the died-in-committee is maybe not the best way that we could classify where that resolution is right now. So we anticipate there being discussions in the fall around EKIDS, and I think that this conversation that we're having today on this and the years of conversations that we've had on EKIDS will inform that legislative resolution, should it be scheduled this fall. So that's number one. The second thing, the second question that I heard is around the data collection, so I want to make sure to be clear that this is not about collecting any new data. This is data that is already being collected by a myriad of agencies around the, around the state already. So if I were to classify the purpose and the intention and the importance of any EKIDS system, it's about efficiency and effectiveness of early childhood programs. So I know that we've always had conversations with you about early childhood and the efficacy of those programs. Lisa, you mentioned how it connects to literacy, how it prepares students for kindergarten. Does it prepare students for kindergarten? And that's really what we want to understand and the value of an EKIDS system in general. So not new data, it's data that's being collected. I am looking at this chart here of all of the different partners that are in the early childhood ecosystem. We have DHHS with licensed childcare centers. A big portion of this conversation and where that income data- A big portion of this conversation and where that income data comes in is around childcare subsidies, which is managed by DHHS. Some Medicaid funding, SNAP and WIC funding is also used, so that's income-based, and that's why families would have that data reported. On our side, and in collaboration with DHHS, we have Special Education IDEA Part C, so students with disabilities who are in the early childhood space. We have Head Start. And then there's state pre-K programs that are run at a school as well. So we have all of these different figures that are playing in the early childhood space. And the intention of an EKIDS system is to bring all of that data that's there together so we can understand what is working in the early childhood space and what is not. Does that answer your question?
Yes. So are you saying that the data is only being shared with DHHS? Or are there other state agencies that it's being shared with?
So right now, it would be DHHS and the NDE partnering together to take a look at these and make policy decisions and inform policy decisions. There's an opportunity for us to then bring those data to you all and other policymakers like state legislators, the governor, et cetera, to be able to say, here's what we're seeing from this EKIDS system and what we recommend as far as any changes we would make in the early childhood space. But we are very, I know there was a discussion last month about data security and infrastructure and all of that, and we're, this is really important that we're tight with this data as well. So the same sort of safeguards that are around K-12 data would be present in this as well.
Any other questions?
One, Madam Chair. So Laine, would DHHS have authority to share with other agencies? Are they in the same mindset as NDE is with just keeping it in the agency?
Yeah, definitely in the same mindset. I don't want to speak for DHHS, but one of the pieces, one of the real important parts of this conversation is the creation of data-sharing agreements that pass through their legal teams and our legal teams to make sure that we're meeting all of those requirements and a very clear intention of what these data would be used for or could be used for and how they will or will not be shared. So we anticipate that they're going to be as tight with the regulations around this as we are.
Any further questions or comments? Lisa?
Just to reiterate and clarify, so November, just a month away, is when they're going to be doing the interim study?
They have not been scheduled. They're scheduled by the Chair of the Education Committee. And so we're, we've been hearing, we've been told that November and December is when we can anticipate conversations about scheduling. Yeah.
The motion is to contract for services for the Early Childhood Integrated Data Systems. Would the recording secretary please call the roll? Christensen?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Schoenhoff?
No.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Penner? Six yes, one no, one absent. The affirmative has it, and the motion to contract for services for the Early Childhood Integrated Data Systems is adopted. Item 7.3. Chair Lisa Schoenhoff will report on behalf of the Planning and Evaluation Committee meeting.
The Planning and Evaluation Committee reports on the committee meeting on October 2, 2025. The members present were Lisa Schoenhoff, Sheri Jones, Deborah Neary, and Kristin Christensen. The committee discussed one action item related to subject area exams and passing scores for temporary certificates. The committee recommends board approval on this item. The committee reviewed informational items related to the community achievement plan progress report and timeline, the assessment and reporting plan and assessment technical report, and the K6 geography and civic standards. NDE staff will bring these items to a future meeting for discussion and subsequent approval where appropriate. The committee also reviewed a consent agenda item related to the appointment of individuals to fill vacancies on the Special Education Advisory Council. This concludes the planning and evaluation report. I'm Lisa Schoenhoff, Chair.
Are there any questions on the Planning and Evaluation Committee report? Is there a motion on item 7.3.A?
I move to approve subject area examinations and passing scores for temporary certificates.
Second. It is moved and seconded to approve subject area examinations and passing scores for temporary certificates. Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve subject area examinations and passing scores for temporary certificates. Would the recording secretary please call the roll? Jones?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Penner? Christensen?
Yes.
Schoenhoff?
Yes.
Tegmeyer?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent. The affirmative has it, and the motion to approve subject area examinations and passing scores for temporary certificates is adopted. Item 7.4. Chair Maggie Douglas will report on behalf of the Rules and Regulations Committee meeting.
The Rules and Regulations Committee reports on the October 2, 2025, meeting of the committee. Members present were Chair Maggie Douglas, Vice Chair Liz Renner, Elizabeth Tegmeyer, and Kirk Penner. Committee members reviewed the report on rules and committee report. NDE staff provided information on Rule 13 regulations and procedures for exempting schools for which parents elect not to meet legal requirements for school approval and accreditation. Committee members discussed the changes and recommended adding a specific timeframe for enrollment. Committee members recommended proceeding with a hearing. NDE staff provided information on revisions to Rule 51 Special Education Program Standards due to findings received from the Federal Office of Special Education Programs. NDE staff provided information with regard to the Educator Preparation Program pathways and the conversations around LR 144 that could lead to revisions in Rule 20 Educator Preparation Programs, Rule 21 Certification, and Rule 24 Endorsement. This concludes the Rules and Regulations Committee report.
Are there any questions on the Rules and Regulations Committee report? Liz?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to add a little comment.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to add to the report that how productive our conversation was on Rule 13. I brought some concerns, and I know I wasn't alone in some of my concerns about some disappointment that this rule was basically being kind of stripped down to the bone because of LB 1027 and what this does for the NDE and our role to support and lead homeschooling parents and decision-makers. And I was really heartened by the fact that our committee members and our staff really had, went and did a deep dive, and I think we all learned a lot, and also came to a place where we were able to add something meaningful in terms of the rule and clarifying things for new homeschool parents. But I'm really hoping that we, the door isn't closed for NDE to be able to work with homeschool families and parents in the future, despite what this rule is kind of amounting to. But anyway, I mostly just wanted to thank my fellow board members and the staff for entertaining the conversation the way that we did, so.
Thank you, Liz. Yeah. I think that's one of the fun things about our committees, is we can have a really good time, and yeah. We do. We do have a good time. All right. Let's see.
So there's no more questions. So that leads us to items 9.1 and 9.2. The next items on the agenda are information items and written reports for the board. Agenda item 10, Good of the Order. This section of the agenda is intended for board members to offer informal observations of the work of the State Board. Board members may make brief announcements about attendance at future events for the purpose of informing other board members. No business or motions or suggested actions of the board may be offered at this point in the agenda, nor should board members engage in substantive discussion about other agenda items or introduce new agenda items. If anyone has anything? Sheri?
Just one thing. I look forward to attending the Excel and Ed Conference in November. I gained some very helpful information the last time I attended. I thank the taxpayers for allowing me to, providing the funds for me to attend that conference. Thank you.
Thank you to those who attended in person and who tuned into the broadcast. The next meetings of the State Board of Education are scheduled for December 4th and 5th in Lincoln, Nebraska. The October 3, 2025, State Board meeting is adjourned.